We call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the Monday, July 19, 2021 to order. And at this time, I would ask that Commissioner Allman give us invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for this evening that we've had to come together, Lord. I pray that the business that we do tonight be uplifting to you. I thank you for our county. Thank you for our leaders and the county staff. And thank you for all the many blessings that you give us. And I pray that what we do tonight be uplifting to your name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Allman. If the Board of Commissioners would look over the agenda, and if there's any changes or adjustments, or we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner Eifert for approval as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second, Commissioner Allman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda has been set. The first item on the agenda is public comments, but we have not had anyone to sign up for public comments tonight. But I'm going to ask, is there anyone there out in the audience that would like to give public comments? Seeing no one moving forward, we'll go to item number two, Airport Authority Board Member Action. Presenter is Mr. Ken Swerengen, Airport Director. Ken?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Airport Authority would like action on the resignation of Walter Scott Booth to be effective 31 July 2021. He has submitted a letter, and you have a copy. And we would like you to act on a reappointment or to fill his vacated position. We have a number of applicants, but I believe, looking at the list, there are only two that aren't on other boards at this time, and that's Mr. Brad Holbrooks and Mr. Art Whitaker. The Authority has indicated that they would prefer Mr. Holbrooks. And the largest reason behind that is, as we go forward, looking at the enhancements, is his background as a military pilot and looking toward what we need to do in the next couple of years, I think he would be a valued member of the Authority.
Any questions of Mr. Swerengen? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Farah? Yes, sir.
We're making the nomination that we nominate Brad Holbrook to become on the Airport Authority.
Okay. Brad Holbrook, if nominated, it doesn't require a second. This requires a vote. Is there any other nominations? Yes, sir.
I know Mr. Holbrooks, he's a fine fellow too. And I also know Mr. Art Whitaker's a great guy. I would like to put his name out there and just see if it would go, but he's not interested in any other boards. He really loves to be on the Airport Board. Nominate Art Whitaker.
Okay, so we have Art Whitaker nominated by Commissioner Barbie. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Each Commissioner has one vote, and I might ask if you would raise your right hand in this case. If you're wishing to fill the slot with Mr. Holbrooks, please raise your right hand. Six. If you're for Mr. Whitaker, raise your right hand. One, okay. So it will be Mr. Holbrooks. And please convey to Mr. Whitaker, we'll keep working, we'll get him on a board. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, do we need to approve the resignation?
First.
I mean, as well, as part of this action?
It would be, well, let's just, you want to do it separate?
You already made that motion, right? Did it pass?
Yeah, we've already appointed it.
I made the motion that we approve the resignation of Mr. Walter Scott Booth.
First and the second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Eifert.
I would like to thank Scott Booth for his service to the Airport Authority. Scott was first appointed on that board in 2011. I served with Scott on that board. And Scott's a good man, and we certainly wish him well and thank him for his service to the airport and also Stanley County.
I echo what you say. I know Scott, known him for a long time. Next, item number three is our EDC Board Appointments. Presenter is our EDC Director, Candace Lauter. Candace?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We have five EDC Board Member terms that will be expiring in August. The Economic Development Commission does not meet in July, so we're requesting appointments prior to our next meeting in August. Expiring from the districts include Randy Parker from District One, Steve Bradley from District Two, Wes Morgan from District Three, Greg Underwood from District Four, and Mr. William Honeycutt from District Five. I believe you have the applications in front of you that were submitted for your consideration for each district.
Did Randy Parker not reapply?
We never received an application.
Okay. Thank you. The way we need to do this is, we need to appoint each district separately. So I guess we should vote separately. In District One, it looks like we only have one applicant, I think, that is not serving on an existing board. And that applicant is Philip Gene Austin, who lives in Oakboro, and he is not currently on any other board. We do have some other applicants that are in District One, but they currently serve on other boards. I don't believe we have, the only applicant we have is Philip.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Philip Gene Austin to the District One seat, expiring in 2023.
Okay. Let me tell you, I do know Philip Austin. I know he's a contractor, and he also deals with the cell of steel, for steel structures. I would say Philip, he's 1970, born 1970, so he's what, 50 years old? Close to it. Getting close. And he's very active, I think, in the Oakboro community. Philip Austin has been recommended to fill the District One slot. So all in favor of Philip Gene Austin, please raise your right hand. Okay. Looks like motion carries, seven zero. District Two, Steve Bradley. Steve Bradley's currently on the EDC. Matter of fact, he is the vice chairman, I believe that's correct. Steve owns a company by the name of New Finish, along with his wife and Norwood. And Steve's been an active member for the EDC. We have some other applicants, but they serve on other boards. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we reappoint Stephen Bradley.
Okay. Stephen Bradley.
No, we don't need a second.
All in favor of Steve Bradley, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. I say we don't need a second. Where's Ginny? We don't need a second on these two. Okay, I didn't think so. We have a number of applicants, but Wes Morgan, who is currently on the EDC, has reapplied. And that is the only committee that he serves on, only board he serves on. He would like to serve another term on the EDC. If you would take a minute, look through the applicants, and if a Commissioner would give me a nomination, I would appreciate it.
Point of order, looks like Sandy Joyner's also a school district seat. There's also a Sandy Joyner who has expressed interest, and she is not appointed to any boards currently.
Are you nominating?
No, I'm just saying there was a nominee that was not appointed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Eifert.
I make a motion we reappoint Wes Morgan.
Okay. Any other nominations for District Three? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of Wes Morgan serving another term, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. District Four. Let's see, who's in? Greg Underwood. And then we have, Greg is only serving on the EDC. His term expires August 12th, and he would like another term on the EDC. You have some other applicants. No, I don't think we do. We don't have any applicants in District Four. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Greg Underwood.
Okay. We've got Greg nominated, so let's vote. All in favor of Greg Underwood, please raise your right hand. Or those opposed, raise your right hand. Okay. Four to three, so Greg Underwood's reappointed. District Five, Will Honeycutt. Finished out a board term, and I'm trying to remember who he finished. Oh, he finished it out for Dr. James. And Will's a CPA.
Point of order.
Yes.
I think it was five-two, because I don't think my vote was either way. If you vote either way, then what would that automatically?
This would be a yes.
A yes.
Five-two. Thank you, Commissioners, you too. Will Honeycutt, he lives in Alamooral, city limits. Will's CPA in downtown Alamooral. Will grew up out in the Mission Church area, West Stanley area, and he's done a good job on our board. Young man, I think he and his wife have maybe five children. And of those five children, I think most of those five were adopted, and just outstanding citizens. I mean, a fine, fine couple. So he would like to serve a full term. So if you would look over your applicants, there's other applicants. Brian Johnson, John Crawford, and Will Honeycutt.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate William Honeycutt.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Will Honeycutt, please raise your right hand. I think that's everybody, seven zero. Okay. Candace, you can inform these folks that...
Certainly will.
You got one new one?
We'll reach out to them.
And four renewals.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're still up. Central Force, Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chairman, we were notified by the Central National Workforce Development Staff that Stanley County had a vacancy for a private sector representative. They requested we reach out to our private sector leadership, and Ms. Kristy Honeycutt indicated that she would have an interest in serving. She's the HR manager for preformed line products and comes highly recommended by the plant manager there. She has agreed to fill the vacant private sector seat for Stanley County. And it's a staff recommendation to affirm that nomination. And I believe her membership application's attached for your review.
Any questions of Ms. Lauter on Kristy Honeycutt?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Allman.
I'd like to nominate Kristy Honeycutt for those positions.
Kristy Honeycutt's been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Kristy Honeycutt, please raise your right hand. Peter, did you vote?
Yeah.
Kristy. Okay. Seven oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Adjustment Appointments, July 2021, Bailey Emrick. Bailey, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we currently have three members, their appointments expire in June, so those spots need to be filled. The Board of Adjustment is a seven-member board with two alternate members. These three positions are currently the permanent members of the seven, not alternates. They do serve for two, three-year terms. The ones that are willing to be reappointed would be Cynthia Fish and Brenda Farmer. David Doolin is not willing to be reappointed to that board. You have a list of applicants, I believe, in front of you. Those include Cynthia Fish, Brenda Farmer, Emma Moore, and Rick Johnson. The Board of Adjustment is solely really on making rulings for variances, special use permits, and appeals and quasi-judicial hearings. So it's very important that they have consistency. And Cynthia Fish has served two terms, and Brenda Farmer has served one. For at least the past three years, Cynthia Fish has been the chair, and David Doolin has been the vice chair. So yes, you do have a list, I believe, in front of you of those applicants.
There's three appointments, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And Cynthia Fish and Brenda Farmer wish to be reappointed.
Correct.
And then you've got Rick Johnson, who would like to be appointed.
Correct.
And you also have...
Emma Moore.
Emma. Emma Moore?
Mm-hmm.
So out of those four, what's the pleasure of the board?
Should we do like, one at a time?
We can do one at a time.
Do it one time?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm making a motion to appoint the one spot Cynthia Fish.
Okay. I don't think we, we don't have to have a second. But thank you anyway, sir. Yes, nomination. All right. All in favor of Cynthia Fish, please raise your right hand.
All right. I get a rat night.
That's seven oh. Okay, that carries. All right, that's one. We've got two more to go.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Eifert.
Nominate Brenda Farmer.
Okay. Brenda Farmer. All in favor of Brenda Farmer, raise your right hand. I believe that's everybody. Okay, seven oh. All right, now, go ahead.
I make a motion we appoint Rick Johnson.
Okay, Rick Johnson. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Rick Johnson, please raise your right hand. That carries, seven oh. It is. We're getting some good exercise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Airport Overlay District Revisions, Mr. Bob Rensberg, Planning Director.
All right, we tried to keep things...
I think you may also work for the library as much material as would having to read.
Want you to be fully informed. Yeah, I do not own stock in a paper company. But good to see you, everyone, this evening. We do have several things before you, maybe good to knock them out this month. First off is the Airport Overlay District, ZA 21-04, Expansion of Overlay District, which includes areas, which is interestingly due to the 1992 runway extension. This affects about 171 different property owners as far as the expansion goes. And we also have a text amendment as part of this to update the ordinance. This is a request from the Airport Authority, and I know Mr. Swerengen's here as well and can speak to this. We presented together to the Planning Board. Most of these properties are currently zoned RA or R20. As we know, the expansion occurred in 1992, but for whatever reason, at the time, the map in the district was not amended at that time. Between the FAA and the consultants, they're working with the Airport Authority, they've realized that this was not done at the time, and so it needed to be updated to reflect the correct map. This is a little complex in that this is an imaginary zone or plane above the airport, so to speak, because you can picture, if you have flight experience or piloting experience, the idea of you've got to have, you know, a safe airspace to land in. So think of that space above the airport, kind of. And we've got a couple of diagrams that may help a little bit with that. Part of it provided by the Airport Authority. So I'll look, that mainly affects communication towers, anything really tall that might be that. And these properties on the edge of what's called the, kind of over the conical shape of the airport, so it's the farther edges that are in the, the new properties affected. But of course, everything gets kind of pushed out. We adopted this language, it was suggested to us from the Chester Cotaba Airport in South Carolina. They have an overlay district that's similar, so we updated the language and the text to kind of reflect that as recommended. The Airport Authority has looked over this and approved it, and of course, the Planning Board has as well. And this meets the current requirements of the FAA. So let me just run through a couple of slides real quick, so you can get some pictures. I hope, I assume you're seeing, able to see this?
Well, you should. Once you advance it, it should.
Okay. Okay. So are you seeing a green slide?
It's a you, always see you.
Ah. Well, I'm sorry about that. We were having a little issue here, and I don't know whether it's capable or not. Give it just a second, see what we've got. Going to work? Not going to work. So I know we had to do a little rigging here. Picture, if you will, I'll just go ahead and explain this, as Andy does the attempt here. The, picture a football stadium, if you will, a full football stadium like, I don't know, like a Chapel Hill or NC State or something, where you have the end zones covered as well. And you've got the, yeah, you've got the map, that's right. You've got, you've got a hard copy. So you get the picture of that, but also, when you get into that yellow zone that's pictured on that map, it's a kind of a conical shape. It comes up 21, 20 to 1 angle to come up. So that's, that's area, but again, there's a...
I've clicked out of everything.
Okay. Which may be...
I'll let you.
Well, actually, maybe...
Bailey, come back.
Because she's the one that had logged in. And it's not a PowerPoint, actually.
It's not. I'm not. For whatever reason, it's not coming up, so.
Okay.
We're going to have to work from paper.
Okay, we'll have to work from paper, that's fine. Okay, well, let's go back to the paper. So what page? And I don't have that in front of me, exactly. But you've got a couple of things. One, you should have that map. I know Scott held it up just a minute ago, Mr. Eifert did. So you see where the runway is, and you can see the approach zone, and then the other districts that are in that as well. And I'm trying to think what I've got to present. The basic idea is that this, because the runway's slight expansion, and working with our mapping department, we identified that there were, as I say, 171 properties around the edge of the, you know, Ken, you may have to help me with the names of the zones, since I don't have my slides in front of me. You've got the...
We've got Conical, Conventional Approach.
Right.
Isn't that allowed?
Yeah, the, well, the, yeah, the kind of, what color that would be? Kind of reddish color, pinkish color. That's the horizontal plane that's over the airport. It's at, remember right, 150 feet, right?
150 feet.
All right. So I tell you what, Bailey, can you log it back in?
Yeah.
Because if I can follow those slides, I can probably explain this a little better.
I sure can.
All right. So you've got that flat plane, and then when you get to the end of those 150 feet, then you've got the conical shape that moves up from there. So again, the folks that are newly affected by this, 171 properties, are on that fringe, both along Highway 52 and then up toward, above Palmerville.
In the yellow.
Well, yeah. And again, I wish you could see that there's another kind of map that shows this, the highlights. In fact, we should have brought the map from the planning department, I guess. But we've got a map that shows all those properties that are affected. So it's right on that edge between what's the reddish color and the yellow color, basically, to give you an idea. Mostly to the north, northeast and southwest, if that makes sense to you. And I guess this, how can I explain this? It's a gotta do. A lot of these things, you know, it seems like we had to bring before you the cell tower issues a little bit, and there was kind of a, almost a mandate that you have to adopt this. This is a situation where we're in, that this is already in place as far as the runway goes, so obviously, this is going to have to be adjusted to fit because of the length of the runway. Otherwise, you just shorten the runway and close that airport, basically. So not a good option.
If I can ask a question?
Sure.
Basically, it just expands the height restrictions a little bit further out than it currently were.
That's right.
The expansion of the air.
That's a good summary.
How will this affect existing properties? If someone has something that's too tall, that's 150 feet or 170 feet, or whatever that limit is, is anyone existing going to have to take something down?
No. I don't believe there's anything existing, and I'm going to look at Ken real quick for that, Mr. Swerengen, because I know the FAA's identified trees and things. I don't know that this is going to affect any new properties.
Not that we're aware of. And if the case that it would, then they would amend the approach and departure procedures and flag it. There's towers out there now that are flagged, they're on the charts for the pilots. It's just a matter of doing the paperwork. And we've done, as part of the ALP, the Airport Layout Plan that we did last year, brought this to light, because they did some very thorough looking at property and our approach and the layout of the airport, and it identified that we weren't in compliance with our height ordinance. So it's not going to change how we do business, because we've done it this way for 27 years. If there's anything out there, then we'll deal with the FAA to get it flagged and put on the charts.
I just wanted to be sure there's not some property owners going to come to us and be like, hey, because you didn't see that PDF, now I can't have my so-and-so that I've already had for 25 years. Only that doesn't happen, no worries for me. Yeah. Our biggest risk probably are tall trees that grow, continue to grow and enter into the zones. But the other issue will be any towers or cell towers or something like that that would get proposed for this area. But I don't think there are any existing that aren't already identified.
Mr. Rensberg?
Yes.
Have you all had to notify any property owners of this overlay?
We sent out 172 letters three times. So, yes.
Did you get any back?
Actually, I don't think we got any return mail. Actually, I don't think we got any return mail. No, interestingly. Yeah, we had to make a choice. You know, the state statutes require notification for this meeting only. We notified for the Planning Board meeting. The Planning Board actually had two different meetings to discuss this. Several folks did come and attend and asked some very good questions, and between Mr. Swearingen and the planning department, we were able to answer, address those questions that were raised at the Planning Board meetings. The other thing we did, of course, was to post signs, and there are three signs out there on, really on each side of the airport, and one on Highway 740 out there to identify that there's this hearing coming up. And we did that for both the Planning Board meetings and the date for this meeting on that. The only other way to notify large affected areas is to put advertisements in the Stanley News and Press, and it requires a half-page ad. So we'd have to vault, so it was actually less expensive for the county to send out 171 or 172 letters than it would have been to purchase an ad. So we opted for that approach, because these are the primary folks affected. The language change basically is, it really doesn't affect those individual property owners, the text amendment to it. And of course, we've, you know, it's been in, the public hearing notice has been in the newspaper as well. So that was our notification process for this. We thought that was the fairest way and would follow the statutes. Unless you have questions about the Airport Overlay District, we're happy to try to answer them. Sorry, we don't have the pictures for you, but technology.
Oh, the public hearing.
That's correct.
Public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against this overlay? If there is, please come forward, state your name, tell us whether you're for it or why, or whether you're against it. See anyone coming forward?
Speaker on, don't see anyone coming forward, so public hearing is closed. I believe the Board of Commissioners have heard the information about the Airport Overlay District. You've had a packet delivered to you with maps and all kinds of other language. I do have one question for you, Mr. Rensberg, on page 63, packet page 63. Under Item 2I, it talks about a runway 04R/22L ends 50,000 feet or not for precision, instrument runway, having visibility minimum of less than a quarter of a mile. Is that 50,000 correct?
That's the whole approach.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
50,000.
Right. Which, as you start adding up, that takes us into two different counties.
Okay.
I guess. So that's basically to Denton, is what I recall.
But if I read that right, on that approach corridor, you pretty much just need to have a clear line of sight for about 13 miles.
Sound...
That's what that's for. I just want a clear line of sight.
I'll link to my airport guy, for sure.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure to board.
Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Effer.
I move that ZA 21-04 text and map amendments for the Airport Overlay District be approved as proposed to meet the regulations of the Federal Aviation Administration and promote economic development through the continuing operation of the Stanley County Airport.
Second. Commissioner Effer, second by Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Still here.
You still up?
Afraid so.
Let me flip over, get to the right point. This is for text amendment temporary use?
Correct. All right, so ZA 21-06, board members, this is started because we had literally a phone call from folks at Piedmont Natural Gas, who are planning to upgrade their pipeline through the county, which is down south of Stanfield. And as they do this, they need a laydown yard, a storage yard for this. And what they indicated is that they have at least a portion of a farm there of 28 acres that they've arranged for. Well, if it was just a one-acre tract or something, we could probably continue operating as we normally have, with no language in our ordinance that addresses this. But the more we thought about 28 acres, that's up to two years, we probably need something in the ordinance that says that this is a permitted use of that. One option, of course, would be to rezone the parcel to a commercial, and really, it'd have to be M2, which is our heavy industrial use. And then, two years from now, rezone it again to put it back to a farm use. And that didn't make much sense to us in the planning department, and you end up with the risk of anything going there because you've created an industrial zone. But if you know it's going to be a temporary use, that this is going to go away, maybe there's an option around that. Ms. Emmerich started looking around at surrounding counties and areas and discovered a well-written, in my opinion, ordinance in Union County. And so we were able to borrow their language and write it more appropriate for us, clean it up. But they went beyond construction yards in that, and they included things like sales and leasing offices, model homes, portable storage containers for construction in case of, or in case of a natural disaster, outdoor carnivals, festivals, revivals, crime concerts, other public gatherings, and even Christmas tree pumpkin and similar holiday sales slots. So anyhow, we looked at it and thought, well, you know, we really don't have any of that. So let's see if we can put that all together. This would give us some, it's a fairly flexible language, and it's really what Union County had in place that we put in there. Gives a lot of flexibility to the planning department and the planning director to approve these, with the understanding that if it is a significant impact, such as that 28-acre tract, that that would actually go before the Board of Adjustment. Is it almost like you would a special use permit? And again, in those situations, then the planning board, or excuse me, the Board of Adjustment can, you know, set a timeline, set some specifications about that particular project. Each one of these temporary uses potentially is unique, and because of that, that's where we kind of left it with that flexibility. Anyhow, I won't bore you with any more details on that, because you've got all the paperwork. But this would give us a way to deal with these sorts of temporary uses, including things like the storage yard that you might run into. We know we have the water pipeline project going through the southern end of the county, so I don't know how many times we'll run into these sorts of things, but from time to time, you have a big industry or project like Charlotte Pipe or whatever that might come in, and they need a storage yard in the county. It's only going to be there for a year, two, three years, whatever the limit of their construction is, and would need to be able to go away. So this gives us that ability and makes it a permitted use, and again, a use that could go away, and without having to go through a rezoning process.
What happens if you're issued a two-year temporary permit?
Right.
And the work's not finished, and they need another six months?
There's language in there that allows for that to go before the Board of Adjustment to be extended. So if it does go for an extended period of time, then it, they get to review it, and then again, they can address it and say, you've got six more months, or another year, or whatever, based on the situation at the time. But hopefully, we nail it on the head the first go, Rem.
Any other questions of Mr. Rensberg? Don't hear any, so we're going to have a public hearing. I declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the temporary use text amendment? Don't see anyone, so I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Yes?
Making a motion that we approve ZA 21-06, the temporary use to be put in the ordinance.
We have a first, Commissioner Fur, second, Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion? All in favor of this temporary amendment text on temporary use, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Bob, you're still up.
Sorry. I appreciate your patience with us working through these. Ordinances like this are, anyhow, they're always in flux, I think, as new things come along. This is not a new thing, though. ZA 21-07 is kind of an old problem, I think. Hopefully, if you've read the memo from Dr. Ekman, you get an idea for what the issue was. We've told hundreds of people over the years that, you know, they contact us, I've got five acres of land, I want to put, I want a tractor and a bush hog so I can take care of it, you know, every three months or whatever, and you name it. Or I want to have a garden plot on this piece of land or something. I'm not a bona fide farm, but I'd like to do this with this property. Or even, I want to put up a barn of some type, and I do antique cars, I want to put my antique cars there, but I live five miles down the road or 10 miles away. Or maybe I live in Charlotte, and I'm planning to build a house there at some point, but not yet, but I need a place to put my antique cars, something like that. So we get this question usually several times a week, actually, certainly multiple times. So anyhow, the idea is, can we allow someone with a tract of land of a certain size, and we've suggested, and the Planning Board recommends, three acres, to allow a barn or shed to be on a property as a primary use? I don't think you want to put it on a lot that's small, like you find in a regular subdivision, you know, 40,000, 30,000 acre lot, acre, thousand-square-foot lot, or even an acre and a half. I know some, I'm a little flexible on this in my mind, but certainly, if you've got three, four, five, 10 acres, and you're not a farm, but you want to have a barn or shed on the property, it seems like it would make sense to do that. Otherwise, the only way to do it now is you've got to permit a primary use on that property, which generally would be a house, at the same time that you permit the shed. You can build the shed first, but then you only have six months before that first building inspection has to take place on the house. So if you're not going to put your footings down and have that first inspection, you're not ready for that, don't have the financing for that or something, you just want to put the barn there, I think you kind of get the picture. So I'll kind of stop with that. If you've read the memo, you have the idea, and I'll be glad to answer any questions or something you may have on that. We just felt comfortable with the, with a reasonable size, like a 40 by 60 pole barn, 25, that's 2,400 square feet, 2,500 square foot sort of thing. You certainly get a tractor and some equipment and something like that, and a fair amount of storage. But also to, with the three-acre idea, to, that that's kind of a justifiable size, that you might need something, and it's not going to stand out. You just don't want a whole bunch of individual little lots with a bunch of sheds on them. But to have a fairly large tract, you know, you're not going to notice it. And it does require the setbacks to be the same as you would for a primary structure. Accessory structure, like a barn or a shed, when you have a primary structure on the property, can be as close as 10 feet to the property line on the side or the rear, 50 feet on the front. So this actually would bring it back to, you know, 25 or 15 feet and 40 feet on the rear and that sort of thing. So it won't be quite as close to the property lines, because of the way this is written. And it does say that it's only for the purposes of storing materials or furnishings, or things to maintain the property. So the goal is to make sure that they don't turn into a car repair shop, or a junkyard, or something with a shop in the middle of it. So that's the reason for adding that language about use in there.
Any questions, Mr. Rensberg?
Yes, I spoke to your concerns about this. I know we've got housing developments going in now with 90-foot-wide lots, and so I can understand not putting a large one on that. But three acres is a good-sized tract, and two things, I would love to see that maybe reduced to two acres and maybe a little larger building than that, because some guy may have a lot of hobbies that he don't want his wife to see, you know, so might like a little bit bigger building than that. So I'd like to see, you know, that changed, if it could be, you know, not really stretched at 2,500 square feet, and maybe down to two acres, if we could, maybe if they do some changes like that, I could go along with it.
I think any changes would require to go back to the, wouldn't require, go back to the Board of Adjustment?
I don't believe so at this point, the, if, because it's, I'm just trying to think, the basic idea is if you're increasing the effect, then it does go back, but if it's, I think you could, that's a good question, and I'm going to look at...
Let me ask this question, Bob. If somebody has an acre and a half of land, and they wanted to put a building, by this they could not.
Correct.
But could they not require, request a zoning or a...
A variance.
Variance?
Yes. So that's the flexibility, is that you could, even if it stays just like this, if you need a little bit larger, build a larger barn, it sounds kind of biblical here, but to build a large barn, or if you need, you know, you've only got, you've got 2.8, 9 acres, and, you know, you want to put that 2,500-square-foot barn on there, you know. And the only catch with a variance with the Board of Adjustment, obviously, there's got to be some sort of justification, and sometimes that could be difficult to do. But that, they do have that out, so you can always ask for a variance. On any number in the ordinance, just always keep that in mind, any sort of number, height of a fence, size of a lot, any of those sorts of things, you can always make an appeal to the Board of Adjustment on that, to see if they'll make an exception to the ordinance, the law. They have, the Board of Adjustment has that authority to adjust the law to fit a particular unique situation. So, but I'm flexible, if you, from our standpoint, I think it'd be fine, I know, I think the Planning Board's fine with minor adjustments to this as well. I don't think they have any issues with it, so.
Commissioner Barbie, are you making that a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we drop the three acres to two acres, and that there'd be a variance on the size of the building, where it could be larger if they could show proof needed. Do you want a specific square footage?
I would.
Specific acreage or square footage of the building?
Right, that's right.
Let's go with two acres, and 2,500 square feet would be fine. I mean, if they can get a variance, that this would stay with 2,500 square feet, but I'd like to drop it down to two-acre parcel.
Everybody understand the motion, Commissioner Barbie? Reducing the land size down to two acres, and the buildings stay at max of 2,500 square feet. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a first and a second. Drop the acreage to two acres, square footage stays at 2,500, max 2,500 square feet. Any other discussion before we vote on this motion?
I did the public hearing. That's just on this motion.
Right. I'm gonna do a public hearing, okay? All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't had it for just a second here to research, but I believe if a substantial change is made in the proposed ordinance or amendment, we would need to give an updated additional notice. And I don't know if going from three acres down to two would be considered a substantial change.
Pretty substantial, I think. So what do we need to do? So what do we need to do?
I guess you could re-note us with the revised language and consider it next time with the part of Mr. Remsberg, I believe that would be the process.
If you, if, well, and I think if the Board, if it's the, I think the Board would need to decide if, or vote that that is the proposed language that you want, or certainly come to a consensus that this is the proposed language that you want, and then we would, yes, put the, I think we would need to re-advertise, we could do it for the August 9th meeting, or some such.
How did you advertise this, Tom?
Well, any text amendment simply is advertised as a public notice in Stanley News and Press. So this was advertised. We do have potentially one more text amendment, has to do with short-term rentals, that's a whole nother item, that we may bring before you for the August 9th meeting, so this could be added to that public notice.
We have a motion on the floor.
We're in discussion?
We're in discussion. Yes.
Bob, and I'm a great example right here of what he said. I start to think, should I recuse myself? Because I want to buy two acres behind me, it's probably two, two and a quarter, and I want to put up a building when I, you start talking, I did the math, it's about 2,700 square feet, it's a little bit bigger than what would be allotted here, and the land is smaller than what's allotted here. However, I would be okay with your language as provided here, as long as it's, you know, is that something that's commonly done now? Because it seems to me like what you're asking for is a way to make the everyday questions just kind of go away so they're covered. So how hard a time do people have getting a variance now, is my question?
Well, I can speak to your specific example. If that property is adjoining your property and the deed is in the same name, then we would allow that, and we always have. So that, you would not be affected, so I guess in the short run, you don't need to recuse yourself. But, but on the other hand, yeah, if you weren't adjoining, let's say there was a strip of land between you and this property nearby that your uncle owned or something that you, you know, but you have that and you want to, then yes, you could not technically do that unless you permitted a house at the same time. Some people will permit a, I think Bailey calls it a barn dominium, but a, like a garage apartment kind of thing, so you can do that, if you can get the perk test to pass. We've seen all sorts of ways that people get around it. We permit, I'll give you another weird example. We permit, like in the RA District, a greenhouse as a primary use. So what's a greenhouse? Well, it could be a side of a barn, so anyhow, gets interesting. So we've seen people try to get creative here. So I'm trying to avoid some of the creativity and be able to make it a legal thing, and quite frankly, be able to tell people, yes, you can do that up to this point. But where that point is, is always the question.
Basic clarification, originally it's like three acres. You put like a 2,500 square foot adjourning, building a barn or whatever on with the house, plus the house. So by reducing it to two acres, but keeping the 20, what did he try?
Okay, well, the catch is, Mr. Shuto, there's, no house is needed. The house could come later, but that's, but if you want, if you want to do something on that property in advance of putting a house, if it's zone residential, pretty much has to be a house, so, or greenhouse at least, but one of those permitted uses, but generally a house, so you don't, you can't put anything on that lot pretty much until you put the house on it, or at least permit the house. So as I say, we get this question.
Correct, so eventually you're going to put a house there. You don't have to, though, but.
You don't necess, yeah, with this.
I guess what I'm saying by doing that, your neighbors are going to be closer together than they are compared if you had three acres.
Potentially, yes.
Because if you have a three acre plot of land, your neighbor's going to be a part of it. When you have two acres, they're going to be closer up on you, and if you're putting up something like a garage or something like that, that might potentially make noise or whatever, you're closer to your neighbors, correct?
Well, obviously, you're, yeah, well, yeah, two acres versus three acres, so it's, yeah, you're, obviously, you're right. I mean, naturally, you're probably going to be closer to the barn or the shed than you would be if it's a three acre lot, two acres, so.
I guess my question on this is, we're getting residential mixed up with commercial. Even if you build a building on this thing, it's two or three acres or whatever, it's under a residential type thing. If somebody wants to open up a garage there, a building shop, he's going to have to have it transferred over to commercial.
That's right.
So, result, so why are we worried so much about whether it's two or three acres? As long as we keep it residential, it doesn't matter how many acres it is, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that depends, because if it's residential, eventually there has to be a house built there. That's like, I've got two and a half acres right now that's vacant, that if I wanted to put a building there, I could do it based on the criteria that you stated.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, but if it becomes commercial, then it's got to be zone commercial.
Commercial, that's right, that's right. So, yeah, part of it's a use-driven thing versus a structure thing, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, I think part of the reason for making it three acres, it's not written, but I feel like it's in the subtext, is you don't want somebody to slap up a shoddy building and stick it in between two nice houses in a small chunk of land just to park his crap in and let it rust to pieces in five years and not have it, you know, that's what the fear is with that happening, is it turning into a shanty town throughout the county.
That's a pretty good summary of it, yes, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, we could approve zoning for 90-foot wide lots and build.
I didn't.
We've got a motion on the floor that we have a first and a second, and before we vote, is there any other discussion? Here, let's vote for the motion. And Mike, I believe you said the motion was to reduce it from three acres to two acres, and 2,500 square feet is what was planned, so that's no change there.
Right.
So all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe that's where he said he was going to have to do the re-go back around, wasn't he?
Direction.
Right, so. Right, yeah, well, if you, okay.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, motion fails, so let's have a public hearing.
Right.
I'm going to call a public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. And I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll close the public hearing. Make the statement before we have any other motion. If somebody has an acre and a half of land, and they want to put a building on it, then they need to come to zoning and request a zoning change, correct?
Variance.
Yes.
Variance, okay.
Unless it's a permitted use, like a greenhouse or a house.
Okay, so we can still accommodate those citizens that have less than, if it's approved.
If it's approved, as long as it's a justified reason, yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, can I make a clarification, get something clarified first?
Yes, sir.
On the item here, it says three acres or larger. That's supposed to be three acres or smaller, is that correct?
No, larger. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Jordan?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve it as presented, with the three acres at 2,500, 100 square feet.
Is there a second? Commissioner Almond, second. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Six. Those opposed, please, okay. One opposed. Motion carries six one. Okay. Number nine. Mr. Remsberg?
I'm still up.
All right, last thing, I promise. Flood damage prevention ordinance, a few meetings ago, we adopted some revised language related to 160D updates for the general statutes. We have since received some updated guidance from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. They're the ones that oversee the flood damage prevention program for the state, and they suggested several bits of language that were different from what we had adopted. It's minor changes, there's one definition change, and just some clarification, and otherwise, it's just numbers change in this ordinance. It's very, very basic to what's changed. We about got it right, but not quite 100%, so we needed to update the flood damage prevention ordinance to reflect the revised language. It doesn't affect what we're doing at all.
Any questions of Mr. Remsberg? Got it easy on that one?
I thought so.
I'm going to open a public hearing for this, so I declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone to come forward to speak for or against this flood damage prevention ordinance revision? Don't see anyone, so I declare a public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance updates for the flood damage prevention ordinance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Almond, is there a second? Second Commissioner Farrar, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Item number 10, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item relates to the county's efforts to enhance broadband and high-speed internet coverage for unserved and underserved areas of the county, of the community. We've been working with Broadband Catalyst to assist us over the past 12 months with surveys and other initiatives to advance our efforts. I'm recommending that the county continue to contract with Broadband Catalyst for the attached scope of work, which includes pre-planning, mapping, and the submission of the required grant applications or other federal applications to assist us with getting additional grant funding to expand, enhance our broadband efforts. The cost for these services can be covered in the existing EDC's budget in the Strategy Fund. If the county receives a grant award, the additional fees for the grant administration, we can match that, or we could use our American Rescue Plan funding to assist with covering those fees, and those dollars have been set aside in a special revenue fund, separate and apart from the general fund. So I'd ask the Board to consider an authorized staff to execute a contract with Broadband Catalyst based on the attached scope of work to enhance our broadband efforts. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for County Manager Lucas? Don't hear any, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we authorize staff to execute contract with Broadband Catalyst based on the attached scope of work.
Motion by Commissioner Jordan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. We have consent agenda, I believe everyone's had their book long enough to look over it, any changes?
I make a.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Shuto for approval as presented, is there a second? Commissioner Farrar, second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Board comments, announcements, committee reports. I'm going to start with Commissioner Farrar. Commissioner Almond?
Just a quick comment, went to the Fourth of July parade, saw Dave down there, biggest crowd I've ever seen there, it was huge. Just like to thank everybody who helped put that on.
Mr. Jordan?
I too got to attend that. I've lived here 11 years this year, and I've always done other stuff on the Fourth, but I got to go this year, and it was pretty neat. You don't see that many of Stanley County in one spot that often, and the people I talked to, it was pretty awesome. Two quick comments, one about broadband, to those of you that hopefully may have watched this down the road, don't lose heart. I get a lot of comments about, you know, can we get broadband better, what can we do, can you help us faster? It isn't a fast process, unfortunately, because it involves a lot of different government and a lot of different departments and a lot of different statutes and laws that get in the way, and we really are working as fast as we possibly can to make change and to get broadband improved here in Stanley, but every time we take two steps forward, it's good half to one step back, you know, but it's getting there. So thank you for your continued support and your patience, and my last comment, I don't know all the details except what I've read in the paper today, but keep Alma Fire Department in your hearts and prayers. They've got a lot going on right now with quite a few members down with COVID, and I had a friend during this meeting send me a text about how our news agency kind of picked up and was saying that a lot of, you know, city departments, county departments, you know, were coming together to fill slots and that kind of stuff, obviously not firefighter slots, but it's good to see folks come together for those guys, and we don't normally have that many people in one small place hit by COVID at one time, and that's a critical department. So our thoughts and prayers are with them. That's it from me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbie?
I don't have a lot to add, except want to make a couple of comments about how short life is. Good friend of mine, whose son is the same age as my son, was killed in a tragic accident this week, so keep their thoughts and prayers, and we need to look how valuable life is to be taken away from us in a moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Eifert?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, Stanley Community College is celebrating their 50th birthday this year, and I'm so happy that you survived being buried with the time capsule the other day. I was worried about you.
Were you? Thank you.
So a happy birthday to Stanley Community College.
Commissioner Shuto?
Basically, we just want to reiterate about the Alma Fire Department and keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and looking at the numbers, the numbers for COVID is starting to increase in Stanley County, and it's not up to near close to where they were, but they're unfortunately on a trend thus upward. At this point, it's pretty much the non-vaccinated people that are getting COVID, and that's purely preventable if you, people would just get a shot in the arm. And I got a statistic, one thing that I got from David Jenkins today, you know, people talk about COVID is no different from the flu. Well, they keep track of flu deaths in Stanley County. Since July of 2012, 200, I'm sorry, July of 2016, there have been 12 deaths due to the flu in Stanley County, 12 deaths due to the school and the flu in Stanley County. That's since 2016. In the last year, since July, that's when the COVID deaths started in Stanley County, we have had 143 deaths in Stanley County in the last year. So this is much more deadly than the flu, and I think of the statistics we got, there's unfortunately eight or nine people in the hospital right now, two of them are in intensive care, and one of them's not on there, but they've called hospice. So let's keep all these families in your prayer. Like I said, this thing is preventable, and if you just take your vaccines, I mean, we see these Olympic athletes are being pulled from the Olympics because they're testing positive for COVID. They've had three months to get a vaccine. And just to let you know, they have the Department of Health in Stanley County, they have free COVID shots tomorrow and Wednesday, and I believe there's still any at the health center, at the department, the clinic, health department clinic. So you go down there, get your vaccine, and they're giving away, I believe, $25 gift cards if you get a, if you get a shot. And then I'm a ambassador, a vaccine ambassador with Atrium Health, trying to promote people getting vaccines and shots. promote people getting vaccines and shots. And I was able to get a donor, help secure donation from a gentleman, doctor who used to live here, he's from out of town, he wishes to remain anonymous. And on Friday at East Gate, East Gate Cinema, between nine o'clock and two o'clock, we're gonna have a Vax-a-dash event, so not Vax-a-dash, Vax-a-dash. So you can come in there, get your vac, vaccination and dash out of there. Everyone who comes gets a vaccine on Friday at East Gate Cinema, they get two free movie tickets, plus they get a chance to, to get $500, plus they get a chance to win, we're giving Vax-a-dash to donate in two pairs of shoes. So I just urge people, man, if we want to get back to normal and do all this stuff, we, we really need to get vaccinated. And if you don't want to get vaccinated, the CDC guidelines will tell you, you need to wear a mask, you need to wash your hands, you need to socially distance. So if you don't want to get a vaccine, that's what we need to do to keep the, keep COVID from expanding in Stanley County. Thank you for, thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for those comments. Looking for an email that Andy sent to me, and I can't find it. But it was about residential home permits, and I can tell you that residential home permits are up over 90-some percent. The same period last year, January through, I think the report was through June, which still a lot of building going on, and we're thankful for that. Do want to say that, I'm gonna tag on to Peter just a little bit. Andy sent us a update, COVID update this afternoon, and I do want to find that. Hang on a second. There were 19 new cases reported Saturday and Sunday, over this past Saturday and Sunday, which is the highest two-day weekend total since late May. So COVID is raring its head again. And here's the sad part. There's 19 new cases, three of those cases were fully vaccinated citizens. And I know who one of those particular citizens were, may know two of them. And I do know they were around some folks that were not vaccinated. And the vaccinations, I mean, it's a choice. You can get it if you want to, and you don't have to. I did take the vaccination, and luckily I didn't have any side effects. If I did, I don't know if I've had them. But I encourage you, I don't think it's gonna hurt anybody to take a vaccination. But again, it's your choice, not mine. I made my choice, and when I made my choice, my wife, at that time, did not take her vaccination. She was leery of it. Later on, she decided it was time for her to take a vaccination, and she took to J&amp;J, which is a one-shot, I had two shots. And luckily, she's had no side effects. My daughter-in-law, who does not live in Stanley County, but lives in Davie County, had COVID. She was in her bed for eight solid days. And the only time she got up was to use the bathroom or get, try to eat something. But she was there for a long time. My son and my grandson stayed in the same house with her, but did not get close to her, and luckily neither one of those picked up COVID. But hey, it's up to you all to do it or not to do it. I do think it would help, if I come down with COVID, I don't think I'll die from it, but I do think the vaccination that I took will probably have a lighter case than I would have if I didn't. It's just like the flu shot, I've had flu shot every year for a number of years. I got the flu a couple of years ago, felt bad for about two days, but I got over it. I do think the vaccinations do help. That's all I've got to say. I do wish the Fire Department, Albemarle Fire Department, my prayers are that they will get back to recovery, because firemen, I don't know if y'all realize or not, but those folks are all in good shape. And to have some suffering to the point of being on a ventilator, that's pretty tough. So don't have any other comments, that's my comments for tonight. I'm gonna ask County Manager Andy Lucas, do you have anything?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Motion by Commissioner Almond, do I have a second? Second Commissioner Farr, all in favor, please say aye. Adjourned.